Call to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, November 6, 2023. Please call at all.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Byers?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. We start tonight with public comment, and there is quite a bit of public comment tonight. So I'd just like to go over the rules for people. You have, we'd like you to state your name for the record. And you have three minutes to speak unless you represent a group, and then you have five minutes. And we have a number of people speaking on two different issues tonight, so I'm going to be fairly tight on the timeline on that. We ask that you respect that three-minute, five-minute time, time limit on that. As we go through this, it, there could be some differences of opinion, and we ask that you don't applaud, you don't jeer, you don't cheer, any, anything like that. Let's, let's keep it pretty neutral and formal here as we go through this process. So our first commenter is Braxton Myers.
Hello, council. As you very well may know, my name is Braxton Myers, and I'm representing the Student Government Association here at Illinois State University as an off-campus representative. I'd like to thank everyone who has decided to come today and speak on this issue and make their voices heard. On behalf of the student government, we have passed resolutions calling for the town, town of Normal to implement an ordinance for adequate notice to be given from landlords to tenants for the past three years consecutively. For the last year, both Grant Chassis and I have been trying to advocate for this need in the town of Normal and have spoken to all of you about this ordinance directly. In discussions of this ordinance with council members and landlords, there's been a lot of consideration given to potential tenants and potential customers. But today, I'd like to talk about the current tenants that have to reside and occupy in these apartments. For leasing, for years now, leasing agencies and landlords have been intruding into apartments of tenants, often without notice, catching them in the most vulnerable states in their homes. This is a business practice that is unfortunately widespread in Normal, especially in student housing, and one that only hurts the tenants that Normal houses. In benchmarking this policy, I'd like to point to the town staff's report that noted that large public university towns in Illinois have enacted this policy over two decades ago, such as Urbana, Evanston, and DeKalb, and over 20 different states in the Union that have some form of a 12-hour, 24-hour notice ordinance. This leaves Normal to catch up on this issue, as it is currently out of step. To put this issue into perspective, I would like to, I would like to outline how different we think of tenants' privacy versus, say, a homeowner's privacy. You would not expect the plumber, the mortgage lender, or the realtor to show up in your home if you're a homeowner, nor do they have the legal right to. But the current lack of policy in this area puts tenants in a box that says that they do not deserve the right to privacy in their homes, while homeowners do. Today, you have a chance to rectify this. On the current state of the ordinance, I'd like to remind council members that we were told over the last year that we needed a compromise on multiple different occasions. In front of the council today is that compromise. Now that there's a halfway point for a 12-hour notice and an extremely generous waiver system on the table, I frankly do not see any reason to vote against this policy or to modify it even further. This is a policy that gives agency to the tenant to at least be able to allow a landlord to come into their apartment without a 12-hours notice on a case-by-case basis, instead of a landlord ignoring the tenant's wishes and coming in anyway. While a 24-hour notice ordinance would still be the most effective option here from a tenant's perspective, it is striking and it is apparent that we need some sort of basic law in place that is also substantive. Tenants from this community are asking you to do something and to commit to their needs. But at the core of this issue, we need to protect the tenants who are paying customers instead of protecting the convenience of leasing agencies and what they seek. Time must be given to allow a tenant to plan around a showing, which is a regular and consistent recommendation all around the country that landlords normally adhere to. But I ask, why is Normal different? Why do tenants in this community have to settle for less than the bare minimum in terms of their privacy? The answer is that it is simply not reasonable that they should. I request that you vote with your constituents and make a clear choice to help protect their privacy, protect their dignity, and give them the respect that they deserve as a member of this community under the law, instead of protecting the interests of a small number of landlords who have already had an extreme amount of input into this legislation and have tried very hard to make sure that this doesn't happen. You'll be hearing from tenants tonight who have faced these intrusions because of lack of any notice, and it's high time that there's law in place to protect them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jimmy Holmes.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Holmes, and I'm a senior at Illinois State University, currently living off-campus. I'm here to express my support for the 12-hour notice ordinance that is on the agenda tonight. This ordinance represents a lot to myself and every student I have spoken to it about. It represents the respect students deserve as humans. It should not be the case that someone can come home to four strangers in their space or be woken up by someone in their apartment, let alone their bedroom. Leasing agencies do not provide any amount of reasonable notice right now. A few weeks ago, I was awoken on a Friday morning to pounding on my door and strangers in my apartment. I checked my phone before getting out of bed, and I had received a text all of three minutes prior. The text read, "Our agents will be stopping by your apartment for a brief showing in the next 20 to 30 minutes." These practices are predatory. These leasing agencies only do this to students. The population of Normal is around 53,000 people. Of those, more than 20,000 go to ISU. And while not all of them currently live off-campus in student apartments, the overwhelming majority of them will. I urge you to vote to protect your constituents, to recognize them as humans who deserve at a bare minimum a notification that their landlord is bringing strangers into their home. Please vote yes. Anything else is a smack in the face to all 20,000-plus students living in this town. Thank you.
The next speaker is Angela Dedicatoria, if I got that right? Close enough?
Hi, I'm Angela Dedicatoria. I'm a senior at Illinois State University, currently living off-campus, and I want to share an experience I had on October 3rd. On October 3rd, I woke up to four men and a leasing agent walking into my bedroom. I had just woken up, and I was completely undressed because that's how I sleep. It definitely scared me to have four strangers in my bedroom. I probably also scared them as well, if not me, definitely the state of my bedroom. But I checked my phone, and it was getting blown up by all my roommates saying that they received zero notice. This was the absolute last thing they wanted right now. They had asked the leasing agent to not show certain rooms, and they were disregarded. And as a young woman, as a daughter, as a student, a person, I take privacy very seriously. It was a very scary situation to walk into, and all I ask for is a notice, so please take this into consideration, and I really appreciate giving the opportunity to talk about it.
Next speaker is Megan James.
Hello, all. My name is Megan James, and I'm a sophomore here at Illinois State University studying political science and political communications. And I'm here to speak on an issue that has been affecting the Normal community regarding the 12-hour notice. Most recently, I toured apartments for my upcoming junior year here at ISU and was baffled by the things that I saw. From the beginning, I knew the issues that lie with the realty companies in Normal and believed that the 12-hour notice will help ensure the safety of residents. When I was heading over to the first apartment to see, the leasing agent I was working with pulled out their phone to text the residents that we would be coming to see the apartment while we were driving there. I had my showing date put in two weeks prior, along with the apartments I wanted to see. Despite this, the first apartment we visited was not on the list of approved apartments. When we got to that apartment, there were two knocks, an announcement by the realty company, and we were in with a symbol code. Walking through the resident's apartment, I felt uneasy as I saw all their belongings and then some, without them being there and without knowing we were visiting. The worst situation, though, was when we approached the door of another apartment and watching my leasing agent text the resident as they knocked on the door. Instead of a 12-hour notice or even a five-hour notice, this resident received a five-second notice. As a student that will be living off-campus next year, I would like to know when someone will be entering my apartment. Having someone just show my apartment is ridiculous, and when I get my apartment toured next year, I want to be able to plan around a showing. A day's, a half-a-day's notice allows for this to happen. I urge you to please consider the 12-hour notice ordinance to protect me and protect future tenants in the town of Normal. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paige Hofstadter.
Good evening, council members. My name is Paige Hofstadter, a third-year student at Illinois State University. As a young woman on such a vast campus as ISU, safety remains a crucial concern. ISUPD protects me on the streets, the blue light system safeguards me on campus. I mean, numerous measures have been implemented to ensure my safety. However, one crucial aspect has been largely overlooked during my time at ISU. Leasing companies having the ability to walk into my home at any given time reinforces that no matter what safety precautions are put into place, I am not safe. Just a few weeks ago, I was in the shower when a man walked into my apartment and entered my kitchen. This incident is just one example of many that illustrate why change is urgently needed. As a young woman living in the world we live, I have to be cautious everywhere, but my home should not be one of those places. I should not have to worry about the possibility of people entering my apartment when I'm showering, sleeping, or at any given time. Having the peace of mind that I am secure in my own home is what makes this community a place I want to live, and knowing that some members, the members who are meant to protect me, do not feel this is a right I should have is completely unspeakable. This is not only a matter of tenants', of renters' rights, but also a fundamental safety concern. For me and for the rest of this town to feel secure and safe within our homes, action must be taken. Stop letting this pass by as dozens of members of your community beg you to step up. Please side with the safety and basic right the citizens of the town of Normal deserve. Thank you.
Next up is Grant Chassis.
Good evening. My name is Grant Chassis, and I served as Illinois State University Student Body Vice President and as a Town of Normal Human Relations Commissioner from 2022 through 2023. I graduated in May, and although I live and work in my hometown of Champaign-Urbana, I considered moving to Normal to be my second home. And as many of you know, along with Braxton Myers, I helped lead the effort to pass the renters' notice ordinance that we're considering here tonight. We are hearing from and will hear about the horrifying experience that students in the town are living through, Town of Normal residents who simply walk on eggshells every day, wondering when someone may walk into their home without notice. In a September article published by WGLT, I saw council members raise some concerns that in private, in meetings, I have tried to debunk, but I would like to do so on the record before everyone tonight. First, the notion that the proposal before us is somehow the product of an isolated, narrow group of us as activists. This could not be further from the truth. In fact, this proposal could be used in addiction to define compromise. As the memorandum produced by town staff notes, the town actually facilitated meetings between renters and landlords to get to this place. I would know because I was vice president with my colleagues representing tenants. And you can take it from me that this is not all that I want and all that we want in housing. We would like some wholesale changes, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. We put compromise on the table. We're willing to put those issues aside to consider this singular, focused ordinance here. The larger changes that all of us want can wait as we try to get this small diluted protection done, because that's just what it is, a protection, and people deserve that. Second, there's a critique that this in some way would strain the housing market. I could try to explain how landlords have a near guarantee of filling their units in this community because our publicly-funded colleges bring in thousands of tenants that don't have a publicly-owned or otherwise affordable housing option to choose from, meaning that private apartments are essentially the only choice. But instead of that argument, I would rather just name examples, the city of Urbana, the city of DeKalb, the city of Evanston, just to name a few in our state that have actually stronger protections than what we have here, but also have a robust rental market, too. And that's not to mention the more than half of states in our country that have these in state law. So landlords are doing just fine all over the country with protections just like these. So ultimately, in my view, this is a test of this council's commitment to everyone in this room and everyone outside. If citizens are first, as the town claims citizens to be, I think this would pass unanimously. But if a small number of apartment companies get their way in blocking this very basic change, I think this council would have different priorities. I would recommend that you listen to the advice of your own town staff that have produced the memo recommending this change, all of us here today, and adopting this common sense, basic, bare minimum proposal to help everyone that you're bound to serve. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Michael Holfilner, I'll get that right. We'll hear it out of your mouth.
Hello, good evening, Town Council. I am Michael Holfilner, and I am a homeowner and resident of Normal, and I am horrified by the stories that I have heard tonight. While this ordinance may not affect me directly as I have a home and don't have to worry about a landlord entering my property, I implore you to vote yes on the city ordinance to give tenants 12-hours notice entering occupied units. Tenants have the right to privacy as embedded in our constitution. Landlords always expect their tenants to be respectful to units they occupy and the landlords that own units. Landlords should also be expected to respect tenants and their privacy and not just view them as numbers of income to their wealth. While landlords may argue this could inconvenience and will affect their businesses, it's false. An inconvenience is due to tenants who fear that their landlords will appear and their units for strangers to show to you. Surely their business will not be hurt because if a unit needs to be shown before it is unoccupied, surely business is booming. It may be argued that this is not happening, and landlords would never infringe upon their tenants' privacy, but if it weren't happening, we wouldn't be hearing the stories that we've heard tonight, nor would this vote be happening. I once again voice my opinion in favor of this. Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Megley.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Megley, and I'm representing the interests of Sammy, Fersite, and Young America this evening with respect to the residential tenant notice ordinance that the council's considering this evening. Much, much like those who have spoken before me, I would urge you to consider your constituents as you evaluate the ordinance that's before the council. Sammy, Fersite, and Young America represent approximately 85% or more of the apartment market. They are your constituents, as are the property owners whom they represent. It should also be noted that just because these are individual property management companies, they do not own all of the underlying units. There are a number of property owners that have placed their properties in the, in the possession of these markets so that their units can be properly managed. Other communities with college campuses also do not have ordinances of this nature and rely upon tenants entering into contracts with landlords to manage how access to their units will occur. With respect to the ordinance before the council, I would suggest that there are other, that additional vetting is necessary. There are other commercial property owners who own residential units, and there are questions about whether they were contacted. Certainly, those that I represent, who are large management companies, were part of this discussion. I would only suppose that there are a number of other property managers or property owners who have similar properties for which this discussion did not occur with them. Additionally, was Illinois State University contacted to discuss the impact on transfer students and athletes who frequently come to property management companies on less-than-ideal notice, seeking to look at units very quickly? It is the goal of the property management companies to be able to provide access to units that these students are looking to potentially rent. Doing so gives the tenants, the potential tenants, a sense of where they might be able to live, and we may not have another opportunity for them to return to the community to look at these units in the future. Additionally, I think it is important to look at the policies that are presently in place. For example, Fersite has in place a tenancy, a policy for tenants with respect to how notice is given, the methods by which it is given, and also provides tenants with the opportunity to deny access if it is inconvenient for them to have individuals accessing their units at the time. It is very important to each of my clients that their tenants have good experiences. With social media being what it is today, my clients are well aware of the impact of a poor experience by a tenant. Their goal is to re-lease units that are being leased by tenants, which means they need to be having good experiences. In addition, ensuring that access to units is available reduces vacancy rates, which keeps rents lower and keeps overall maintenance higher. My clients have in fact proposed a separate waiver, which would allow a baseline ordinance to be in place, but an opportunity for those who are interested in waiving the notice requirement to do so. Existing policies give, provide opportunities to tenants. It allows them to, to determine when access is desirable or undesirable and to communicate with the landlords and/or management companies regarding these matters. One of the matters that neither this ordinance nor likely any can resolve is failed communication among tenants or failure to appreciate when notice is properly given. I am not suggesting that in all cases, notice was properly given, and certainly it is the goal of the management companies that this always occurred. However, we want to make sure that when we are giving notice to tenants that is being provided to all of their suite mates, which we think sometimes does not occur, as we have heard stories of, oh, by the way, I guess my roommate never told me they got a text from you or an email from you. When access is needed for these units, it is very important that there is the ability to show units to prospective tenants. This applies not only in situations where we are re-leasing for the next year, but also in situations where a tenant is no longer able to satisfy their obligations under a lease. In those particular cases, it is important that we can get prompt access to units to provide potential sub-tenants with an opportunity to look at these properties. This allows us to avoid additional rent accruing for tenants who may not be able to stay in a rental unit. Unfortunately, if this, if this ordinance is adopted, it will not change the needs of the management companies or property owners. As a result, they are facing providing routine notice to tenants on a regular basis in the anticipation that, that access may be needed. In addition, it's our evaluation that this particular ordinance only provides a private clause of action. This results in increased costs for tenants and may result in additional rent if no sub-tenant can be found in situations in which sub-tenants are needed. It is our opinion that existing leasing policies and notice policies provide additional rights to tenants that are not covered by this particular ordinance. Here, owners may have no choice but to enter a unit if consent is unreasonably withheld, which is yet to be determined what that includes. For example, if a tenant says that entry is just not-
Ms. Megley, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your-
I will. My, my apologies.
Your minute over.
If entry is just not desired, they may still need to enter the unit because they can't secure access to other properties. We would argue that the ordinance here needs to be reconsidered and reevaluated. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Matthew Tosco.
Hi there, I'm Matt Tosco. I'm here to speak in favor, grudging favor of the 12-hour rule. It doesn't go nearly as far as the 24-hour rule, but it is a compromise, one that we find acceptable. It's a positive development, if not an actual solution, but definitely something, let's look at Normal. You're all elected at large. You know, we tried to change that, it was going to be on the ballot, but you all grasped at every straw you could to not have to do what the people might want. But I do digress. You're all elected at large. Last time I checked, the population of Normal was between 35 and 40% renters, 35 to 40% tenants. I'm willing to bet that the landlords are a tiny, tiny, tiny percent of your constituents by the numbers, and that voting against this would be an incredible dereliction of what you're here to do, what you're sitting here to do. It would be an affront to representative democracy for you to side with a tiny, tiny, tiny little bunch of landlords and business owners, over 35 to 40% of your population, who have demonstrated the need for this over years and years and years. Working with the tenants' union, we get so many of these complaints. They come, a couple of years ago in a campaign, we made them public, those who gave us permission to. So this is not a new thing. It's something that should be done. Like I said, I mean, if, if you're going to really elevate the interests of a tiny little group who blah, 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 it's going to make our lives a little harder. We're going to have to work a little harder for, you know, our investments over the dignity and day-to-day lives of 35 to 40% of your population. You shouldn't be in those seats. I'm sorry. That, that is not how representative democracy works, and you chose to be elected at large. So this is every single one of you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Travis.
I guess I need to change subjects. My name is Jessica Travis. I'm the general manager of Beauty Brands, and I come representing our business and basically our safety concerns of the proposal that you guys are going to discuss tonight. So thank you for your time for listening to us today. We understand from what we've been told that this meeting is just a formality, and the ultimate decision has really already been made. However, I hope we can sway your decisions with the words I'm about to say over the next few minutes. few minutes and the testimonies of our fellow community members. I understand Beauty Brands will not be able to stay in our location regardless of the city council's decision today. However, our stance has not changed. We find that Raising Cane's moving into our area of College Hills will be detrimental to other businesses, especially the ones just opening, such as Tropical Smoothie Cafe, Social Taco, and the new trampoline park, just to name a few directly in the area. The traffic will impede the business flow, causing a financial hardship. Also, the traffic is a very concerning safety hazard. I was disappointed in the October meeting of the zoning committee's decision to accept the traffic survey that was performed in June by a company hired by Raising Cane's. In June, there are no college students here at all, which we all know this is a largely college town, and the traffic survey did not take in consideration the other three businesses that would be opening in the area in the next few weeks. Also, the zoning committee's granting of a variance concerning the parking spaces that was required for the business to be open there also was found to be alarming. The fact that there were supposed to be thirty-eight parking spaces but only provided twenty-eight and wanting to include the drive-through lanes as spaces to slide through seems very unsafe and brings focus back to the concerns of the community of the traffic safety at that intersection. I understand that Raising Cane's has a quick response time as far as their menu selection as they previously stated, but if you have ever visited one of their restaurants, their lines are always very long, just as you already see at Chick-fil-A, and the lines are backed up to college acting. My fear is that this will be the same way with the traffic. We backed up all the way through the Valmar intersection. There have been many radio stations and news articles posted on Facebook with an overwhelming response from our local community that all say the same thing. We are just the voice of the people at this current time that truly believe that it would be beneficial for the members of the city council to listen. We welcome Raising Cane's to our community. However, we find that the location they have chosen to be unsafe and hope that they find a safer location.
Next speaker is Michaela Webb.
Hello. I am a employee at Beauty Brands. We are happy to welcome Raising Cane's to the area, but we don't think that the current location is the best choice. The land can't handle the large number of customers, especially during the rush hour, which will hurt other businesses in the area. The parking lot is not big enough for the employees and the customers of current businesses and restaurants, let alone a new drive-through restaurant. Additionally, the frequent construction on Veterans Parkway makes it difficult to access the local location, especially during the winter months when they need to plow. We suggest two forty Greenwood Avenue on the corner of Veterans Parkway and Mercer Avenue in Bloomington, Illinois, as they have more space and better accessibility. Also, thirteen-twelve East Empire Street is also a good option since it doesn't need much demolition and is near Regent's Bank, Eastland Mall, and Bloomington High School. We also want to share the one hundred and three local patrons that have signed our petition, expressing their concerns and our agreements with our concerns. Our goal is to help Raising Cane's find a suitable location and succeed in the area. All I have to ask is the Town of Normal going to pay for the accidents that occur at the intersection since they have been known of all the concerns? I also have a copy of the petition in the two places that I mentioned, if you'd like to look at.
If you'd like, you could leave that with the clerk. Our final speaker tonight is Andrew Woodburn.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andrew Woodburn. I work at Beauty Brands. I'm a senior stylist, a very proud, also lifelong Normal resident. I'm here to speak about my most past recent experiences over the last month since this news has come out, just trying to use the intersection myself. Honestly, I generally try to avoid it mostly when I can because you can get to that intersection and with all of the flow of traffic that constantly comes in without three new businesses and Cane's in the area, you can sit at those three stop signs for so long that you kind of forget what order anyone even pulled up in, and you're like, "No, you can go, you can go, come this way, you can go, wait, I'll go, I'll go," and then it's a stop, go, stop, go. With Cane's coming in, it's just going to add to it. It's really going to be chaotic. Just the other day, I thought, "Oh, I'm going to run over and grab Starbucks." It was not running over and grabbing Starbucks. I should have walked, honestly. I would have been there quicker and back. But why would I cross that intersection? There's not even really crosswalks, and it's so crazy, like, it would be dangerous. So that is what my concerns are of the intersection. The general response on Facebook articles is that people are very excited for Cane's. It's a great restaurant. We have no problem with them coming to town. I love to see new businesses come to town because I love Normal and I want the whole town to succeed. But maybe it's a little weird to bring up a Facebook article in such a formal setting like this, but that is also how the town found out about Cane's coming to town. Me, personally, on vacation in a whole nother state, finding out that my job is going to be closed and demolished because no one bothered to ask Beauty Brands for our input so we could clarify that we are not closing and we are not leaving Normal and we will be here to stay. With that being said, it definitely has affected our business because people are very confused. If we would have been able to disclose what our plans were, all of that could have been avoided, and it does affect us because we work on commission. And when people cancel their appointments because they think we're closing, they're like, "Well, I better go find a new stylist because my salon is closing. I don't make money, and I can't spend money at Normal if I'm not making money." Imagine if you found out on vacation. How would you feel? The problem isn't that Cane's are coming. We were excited, too. We actually ate there today, just because we were coming to this meeting tonight. The food was great. We were in St. Louis. We were down there for a professional training for the salon. The food is great. I mean, who doesn't love chicken and fries? All of these twenty thousand college kids are here, and we're glad to support them, too. We are a community. But they weren't here for the traffic survey. Twenty thousand. I know some of them live here during the summer, but probably about half go home. I don't know. I've never heard, but everyone knows what the roads are like when they're gone, and everyone knows what the roads are like when they come back. You're like, "Oh, my God, the college kids are back." I love it. I love the college kids. It's great for our town, honestly, really. Like, what would we be without ISU? So I don't see how you can do a factual traffic survey when, what, a third of the town isn't here, plus three new businesses coming in, the holidays, all of that. So it just seems like there's many other logical places to put Cane's where traffic flow would be easier. It was said at the most recent hearing that that is the busiest intersection in town. So it seems kind of counteractive to put a super-duper-crazy-popular restaurant at the busiest intersection and add to an issue that is already a frequent problem. So thank you so much for your time and consideration. I do hope that you guys vote or choose not to have Cane's go to that spot. Granted, we are leaving no matter what, but I do think it would be a problem with the traffic, definitely. So thank you so much.
That concludes our public comment. We go to the omnibus agenda. Items considered routine and will be handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Items considered under omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, a report to receive and file Town of Normal expenditures for payment as of November first, twenty twenty-three, a resolution requesting permission to close a portion of U.S. Highway fifty-one for the annual J.C.'s Christmas Parade, a resolution to award the bid for the Osage Street Water Main Extension Project to George Gildner Incorporated at a total cost of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, a resolution to award the bid for installation of auto flushing devices to George Gildner Incorporated at a total cost of eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the police shooting range, and that's with the city of Bloomington, a resolution waiving the formal bid process and accepting the proposal and authorizing staff to execute a contract with Securitas for Uptown Security Services and an associated budget adjustment, an ordinance amending the Town of Normal's traffic code regulating regarding time limit parking, having to do with Section twenty-three, Division five parking rules. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. Those items are approved. We have a number of items on general orders tonight. The first is a resolution approving an amended final development plan for the shops at College Hills PUD having to do with Raising Cane's at three-eleven A, South Veterans Parkway.
Hold, hold, hold.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you to those who spoke on this issue tonight. I appreciate you coming and making your voices heard. I know there were a number at the Planning Commission meeting recently on this topic as well. I just have a question, presumably for staff. The issue was brought up with a couple of commenters about the parking study being done and not taking into account future business activity there that's already in the pipeline, but also being done at a time of the summer when, you know, seemingly the population of Normal is considerably less than it is, you know, August through May. And so, I mean, staff's feedback on that, thoughts, how much of a difference do we typically expect between summer and nonsummer months in terms of traffic? I just wanted more information, more thoughts, more background on that.
Sure, sure. I appreciate that. I'm looking at the audience. Well, I see... Oh, there's Mr. Otto. I was looking for Mr. Otto and Ms. Davison. I'm going to ask them to come forward. They've been certainly very familiar with this application to amend the planned unit development and have been through the planning commission process. So, Mr. Otto, can you talk specifically about the traffic situation?
Yes. The traffic study originally was done during a time when ISU students were not in session. Typically, the further away you get from campus, the less of an influence the traffic on campus has on veterans, for instance, isn't necessarily heavily influenced by whether or not the students are in or out. In anticipation of kind of the Planning Commission comments, the consultant did go back and recount recently and found that I think the difference between the June count and the current count is about point five percent, which we'd consider statistically insignificant for the volume that goes through the Juma and Veterans Parkway intersection. So we're comfortable with the counts that were done and used for the traffic study and comfortable with the traffic study itself.
Good info. I'm surprised it was only zero point five percent difference. I'm glad I had.
So this is a tough one because you don't like to hear what's happening to an existing business. I am encouraged to hear that it sounds like they're staying in the community, the existing business. Is that... Do you know that to be a fact, or is that just what we heard from commenters?
I don't know personally if that's true or not.
Well, so assuming that's the case, you know, how is it that we got to this point where... And I realize that it was between two private parties, but do we have any idea of why the information was not disclosed and that it became so uncomfortable for the existing business?
Well, we certainly communicated with the property owner, and at the public hearing before the Planning Commission, the property owner sounded like he had been in touch with the owner of the business. We did not get involved in that, and I don't... You know, that would be awkward for us as well to interfere in that way, so...
Right. We wouldn't... We would only know what we are hearing, and basically, we're responding to the property owner's application, and, you know, we always recommend that people communicate, but we can't confirm or ensure that that happens. Well, I was afraid of that. And so my last point being that, you know, traffic is an issue that we do have to deal with, and we may be talking about that on another item tonight. I know we've talked about it in the past, and it is incumbent upon us to, if this goes forward, to watch that area. I know we're doing... There was in the bills section tonight that Landmark and College on the other side of the mall area is being evaluated. We have got to keep an eye on this area, and that's maybe stating the obvious, but I want to state the obvious. From a... I'm not aware of the three new businesses, but evidently there's three new businesses. You know, how can that actually be taken into account? I don't know. Maybe it's not a very elastic study, as it only was point five percent change with respect to the student population. So I'm just going to make a statement here that as government, we have to make sure that the vehicular and actually pedestrian is safe, and that is part of our job.
Thanks, Mayor. I think likewise to some of the folks who've heard speak tonight, you know, when I saw the news come out about the plans for this property, you know, saw a lot of chatter, many, I think, loyal beauty brands, customers, staff that were very frustrated with the decision, you know, also heard, you know, a lot of folks that were very excited to see a Raising Cane's come to town. And I think just in my mind and making a decision, it's always important to remember that our role as a town is to facilitate a process. We are not here to pick or choose if a place is a beauty shop or a chicken restaurant. Our role is to facilitate a process, and if that process is done fairly, we should honor it and respect it, and so that's ultimately why I will vote in support tonight. Thanks.
While staff is at this table, what circumstances might create the opportunity to replace those stop signs as you're coming off of Veterans to go into shops at College Hill with a light? Or is that something that under no circumstance is that an option for that type of intersection that close to Veterans?
Yes, I think the proximity of the two intersections would let itself to stay as the stop control would be very... I can't think of another situation where you'd have something that close, which is really tight, and stop sign... We've shown functions now. Yes, it is congested. It's a busy area, but we did go back and look at, you know, recently, if there were a bunch of accidents, we did not find that to be the case. I think there were two in the last nine or ten months.
Is there any option to have an alternate access to not only Raising Cane's at this location, but the other properties that the PUD can be modified to make alternate access possible and avoid having to use that freeway stop?
Yeah, there is alternate access on multiple fronts. You've got the College Avenue access, which has signal. You have the entrance road near Distill that is also signalized, and a couple of the minor entrances throughout the area that can distribute traffic as well. So this is certainly not the only place for folks to go.
And could you please review what the rationale was for modifying the parking requirements?
Excuse me. So the parking requirement for this property is thirty-eight spaces. They have twenty-eight spaces, but then there's room to stack twenty-two cars in the drive-through, and the reality is that this business model, I think I said in the report, is sixty to seventy percent drive-through. So truly having the twenty-two spaces in the drive-through is, in our opinion, just like having parking spaces. So in that way, it's actually, you know, over what code requires, but it's certainly something Raising Cane's is comfortable with.
Well, I know there's been discussions about how post-pandemic, there's more of an emphasis on drive-through- an emphasis on drive-through and delivery than eat-in restaurants. So, that's not a formal part of our code right now, but you factored that in with the twenty-two spaces available in the drive-through. Do you happen to know how many spaces Chick-fil-A has in their drive-through?
Good question. I don't off the top of my head. And I would also mention in the report that we said that there are a lot of cross-access parking easements throughout the shops, which is really common in a mall setting. And so, there's also into P.U.D., so the, there is that flexibility built in intentionally. So, whether or not it's even a variance is, you know, kind of gray area, but we wanted to be transparent. If this restaurant were anywhere else, it would be thirty-eight spaces required. And, and even in that case, we'd be comfortable with twenty-eight and twenty-two.
And, and I, I want to echo Mr. Byers' point that if we have a process in place and the applicant is satisfied and checked all the boxes for completing that process, I, I fail to see how it is feasible for us to say no to this business, so I will be voting to support it as well.
Where's our on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item eight is an ordinance granting a special use permit for adult-use cannabis at seventeen-thirty Bradford Lane, having to do with the company Iire Wellness.
Move, approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Byers?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of quick thoughts and kind of speaking of the spirit of my, my, my last comment is that, you know, on a lot of these land use and special use matters, we've established processes in which if applicants fulfill the process, go through it fairly and receive recommendations along the way, I think in general, we should respect that and support those decisions. And also just want to point out that the, the last time we had a, two actually, it was my first council meeting earlier this year, two special use permits for cannabis dispensaries, we had a room packed like this to discuss it. And it was notable, looking at the, the minutes of the ZB.A. meeting, that, you know, there was in general not, not much interest in opposing this. So, yeah, I think that, that is a testament that the process was done well and in general, you know, has not received too much pushback, which is double, double thumbs up for me. So, thanks.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo my colleague's insight, but also what we're, the qualifications that these businesses now have to meet has been modified in our most recent action on this topic to make the, the boundaries and the distances a little bit more stringent. So, it is among the most, if not the most stringent land use policy in Normal. And so, we again set out a policy, as my colleague mentioned, and these businesses, if they are meeting them, they, and they're, they were fairly applying the rules, we should have a pretty straight path on what our decision is tonight, and I will be supporting.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. I'm not as friendly on this topic because I think a lot of my colleagues know. And so, I was wondering if staff knows, because I don't think I saw it in here, exactly how far it does meet the distance, both the fifteen-hundred foot rule as well as the, I think it was two-hundred setback from residential. I think it just said that it, it met it, which I'm assuming it did. It did, but I just would like to know. How close? I believe it exceeds, exceeds those minimum requirements, Ms. Davison?
It's a little over seventeen-hundred feet from the nearest dispensary.
Okay, and would that be the one that's planned for Rab Road west of?
Yes.
Okay. And then the setback to residential?
I didn't measure that because it's quite a bit further than two-hundred feet. So, it's, it's pretty far.
Okay. You know, just a comment that I have for the report, I think I'm on page one-twenty-three of the PDF, you know, the applicant says regarding anticipated traffic generation in the context of adjacent roadway capacity, "We anticipate the traffic generated by proposed location will not have material impact on existing traffic patterns, will not exceed that of traditional retail location." You know, I was just kind of left with, okay, where's the backup? You know, where, where's, did they do a traffic study? You know, that's, that sounds more like an opinion piece than a, than a factual one. Anything that can be added there?
I'll start. I'll start and I'll let Ms. Davison jump in and I, I guess, in terms of that particular development, the shops at Constitution Trail Center, that has not completely built out, but it is, it does have some entryways off, two entrances and exits off of Rab Road and then an entrance goes all the way around actually to School Street and a, a couple of entrances and exits from School Street. So, there is significant traffic flow ability around that development and it is built to accommodate a grocery store and hotel and, and restaurant uses. So, I don't, I don't believe the, there is an assumption that this particular retailer will generate the same kind of traffic impact as grocery store and restaurant.
So, they didn't do a separate traffic study?
That is true.
Okay. Well, and I thought it was kind of interesting that, you know, they did show us a comparison of the, the peak traffic time compared to some of their prospective neighbors and like, for some of them, it was like, for them, this applicant, it's middle of the day and also later in the day. Well, that's exactly what Moe's is, which is going to be one of their nearby neighbors. I happen to frequent that exact location a lot because I, from my day job, I pick up a lot of printing work at a nearby printer that's going to be in that same area. So, I'm very familiar with the flow of traffic and, and like a lot of these parking lots and P.U.D.s, you know, you got to watch where you're going because not all the intersections are controlled, so you just have to proceed very carefully. And that, that area is congested and I just, I am just concerned, as I have done others of these types of special use permit uses, have voiced considerable concern about the impact on traffic. And I am, I'm a, just not, like I said at the beginning, not friendly towards this type of special use permit.
Move. Move. Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
No.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Item nine is a motion to authorize the preparation of the two thousand and twenty-two property tax levy ordinance.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Reese, I think you had, going to give us a brief overview of the process here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This time every year, staff comes to council and asks council to consider and then authorize the preparation of the property tax levy. We will then come back in one month and present to you the actual levy for adoption. In this particular instance, we're, we're recommending a levy that will incorporate a policy. We're recommending that we look at this revenue stream in a more policy-related approach. We're asking council to consider a levy that reflects one-hundred percent funding for public safety pensions. And that is for our goal of hitting one-hundred percent by two thousand and forty, to be fully funded for public safety. It's important to note that in addition to the property tax that would be dedicated to public safety pensions, we would also need a little bit of additional revenue from the general fund to supplement to meet our goals. But in addition to funding public safety pensions, we're asking council to consider a, a policy and approach that also reflects a property tax levy that, that would fund a, our I.M.R.F., which is our non-public safety pension obligation and social security obligations at the fifty percent level, knowing then that the other fifty percent of our obligation would come from other general fund revenue sources. And then we are asking council to consider a, a levy amount and allocation that would go to the general fund. And we're asking for five hundred thousand dollars, which would be in the twenty-three table in two thousand and twenty-four property tax levy. That five hundred thousand dollars going toward the general fund would be an additional revenue stream for the general fund in support of our operations and in support of our capital plan. That's the general, that's the general fund property tax levy portion. The other component of the property tax levy, and, and that really would be summarized, that is summarizing the policy that we would like to take. Five hundred thousand dollars toward the general fund, one-hundred percent funding public safety pensions, fifty percent funding for I.M.R.F. and social security. In addition, the council also establishes the levy for the Normal Public Library. In this particular instance, we're, we are requesting an increase in the library pension or funding amount and that would simply be to reflect our anticipated investment in their abatement program, which they will be going out for bids. We have an estimated cost for that and we have an estimated amount of funding that they need to complete that project. So, we are reflecting those dollars and estimates in the property tax levy. So, staff, certainly Mr. Hune and I can answer any questions council may have, but in, in the bottom line would be that this levy would increase six-point-eight percent over last year, which puts us in the truth in taxation requirements. We would, we would, if council supports this, we would post appropriately, have a public hearing in a month and ask council to adopt the levy. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments on this? I'm sorry, Ms. Harris?
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I won't say that there's a lot of questions. Want to first, always like to remind people that tonight is really about us approving the preparation of the tax levy. This is not us approving the actual tax levy, so I don't feel like we should get into a deep debate on that. But I do want to call out some of the things that we have noticed in preparation for the tax levy. While there is an increase, because I know you heard that and that we have to go through the truth in taxation, what is a great story for us is the fact that the rate actually went down even from last year. So, I think that's something good to show and I, I, I like the fact that we are coming out of a space to get back to where we were pre-COVID, but that's looking at how we're funding our pensions as well as going back to the opportunity to fund the general fund. So, to be able to do that and actually decrease the rate, even though the levy itself is being increased, is a great story to tell. And I'm looking forward to having the full conversation at the time that the levy has been fully prepared.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo some of my comments, the comments from my colleague. Just want to say excellent work by staff to, I guess I'll use the word responsibly manage finances by figuring out how to give taxpayers a bit of a break in their pocketbook while funding the town and meeting our, our revenue goals. As those who have been watching this council for a while know my feelings about pension funding. I'm a staunch supporter of one-hundred percent pension funding and was a bit of a stick in the mud when we cut it back to ninety-five percent level, when we need to make some cuts in the budget. At that time, I, I shared those sentiments and asked my colleagues at that time that I hope that they would rejoin me when the opportunity presented itself for us to restore that to a one-hundred percent funding strategy as the responsible thing to do. And we have that opportunity after a few years tonight to do that. And so, I'm very excited by that, that we're in the financial position to fund at a rate of one-hundred percent by two thousand and forty and I will reiterate that request that my colleagues join me in that goal. Also, just at a high level, because we, I'm sure we'll have more conversations, but my colleague mentioned restoring some funding to the general fund to operate the general checkbook of the town. We, we haven't quite restored it yet. It used to be one-point-six million dollars of funding. We're only talking about half a million, so we're only not even quite a third of the way to restoring the funding that staff has used to pay the bills of the town. And as I'm sure everybody in the audience is well aware, costs are going up dramatically, I think in our water department, chemical treatment area by forty percent of the cost of materials to treat your water that you drink every day in this community. And we're asking for a much smaller percent while giving taxpayers a break. I think this is a, a pretty unique opportunity and I'm wholly supportive of preparation of levy at this amount.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I will echo a lot of positive comments from my colleagues about what this levy is representative of. I think that staff has done a great job with this. I love to see the priority of our pensions because those are promises, of course, that, that we have made and, you know, having that at one-hundred percent, I think that's the right policy for the town. I'm glad to see that the library, who is, has much, much-needed and overdue funding is getting a little extra attention here. But, and, and I guess the larger picture, I love that the EAV growth, which is allowing this levy to have a lower rate for property taxes for people who own homes in Normal, that EAV growth is totally a result of a strong, strong local economy, being a vibrant place to live and work, and I love that story all day. The only concern that I have with this levy is specifically on the five hundred thousand dollars into the general fund. I, no question, the costs are going up across the board, but that general fund balance has been going up since we originally cut that in two thousand and twenty-one, or started in two thousand and twenty, I believe, through other revenue sources, considerably more, considerably more supplement than this five hundred thousand that we're talking about. And as a result, that five hundred thousand isn't needed in order to be able to operate how we have been. And I would rather, you know, when inflation's been so high, I'd rather put that back in the pockets of people than, you know, than have it in the general fund. Otherwise, though, I kudos to staff, to the larger community for being the place people want to.
Thank you. Ms. Lorenz and then Mr. Byers.
Well, I think, thank you for allowing me to go next because I want to play off something that Mr. Preston just brought up. I too have similar agreements with what's been said in terms of the pension funding and really taking care of that obligation, restoring it as we have for the last few years to be on track for one-hundred percent funding, particularly on those police and fire by two thousand and forty. Really happy to see the library getting some much-needed attention. We've got to take care of that abatement. We've got to build that back even better. But it's that five hundred thousand dollars to the general fund that really perplexes me because it was just about, oh, I don't know, maybe six, seven months ago, that we removed about that same amount through the repeal of the motor vehicle use tax, I believe. And at that time, we were insured that that five hundred thousand dollars was not going to make a measurable difference. I mean, it makes a measurable difference on my checkbook, but, you know, it was, in the big scheme of things, was not going to be a big impact negatively. And that because of some of the logistics of the way that that tax was handled and staff time and so forth, it was actually almost more trouble than it was worth. So, why suddenly do we now almost seem like we've gone a one-eighty and we feel the need to bring that back, or bring back a similar amount through, in this case, for property tax?
Sure. I don't know that we've done a one-eighty, but I certainly appreciate your perspective on that and it does present as an opportunity to talk about that. We did ask council to eliminate, you did agree to eliminate the vehicle use tax and we were going to absorb that and have absorbed it since June in our, in our budget. The, the request to add half a million dollars onto the property tax levy is, is, I guess, summarized in a couple, for a couple of reasons. One, it does expand our, our ability to, it, it's a small step toward reducing our reliance on an elastic revenue stream like sales tax, sales tax and income tax, which have been very strong and we do anticipate those to be somewhat strong, but we don't anticipate sales tax and. anticipate sales tax and income tax in the future to be as strong as we have seen in the recent years. It does allow us to go back to a policy. We, we would like to be planning ahead with our property tax levy being policy driven. Certainly, we can amend that policy at any time, but we figure for planning purposes, having a policy to drive what we do with our property tax makes sense. And we believe that the half a million dollars does provide some additional flexibility for the general fund to be able to support our growing cost of doing business.
Well, that wasn't, some of those details were not shared when we removed the $500,000 last night. The reliance on sales and income tax being elastic, yes, it can be. Since 2021, those dollars have been, at least the sales tax, have been a lot more robust because of some changes in, I think, federal legislation about local tax getting a portion of online sales. So that's made a tremendous difference. I'm not sure I really hear a compelling answer for why $500,000. And I, and I guess I want to also maybe clarify something that was said here earlier. I know that tonight, the motion is to direct staff to prepare the levy, but we are, in fact, directing them to prepare a levy for a certain amount, are we not?
Correct.
So can I go down this path of, of the dollar amount a bit?
Certainly.
Okay. Because we can, property tax is probably one of, one of the most, one of the more, I don't mean misunderstood in an ignorant way, but can get very confusing. And so it's for that reason that, and most of you in this crowd are not going to remember Ross Perot, but I do. And so back in the 1990s, he too got a little poster board out at one point in a presidential election. I created this not for tonight, believe it or not. I created it probably six or eight months ago. And I created it partially for myself, so that I could remember what property tax is all about. And we can talk about rate declining, as is shown by the line, and we can talk about EAV, which actually isn't even shown on this, because we have no control over EAV. All right? That's the assessed, equalized assessed value that's determined by our township assessor. And, but we do determine, and really the thing that we do determine here tonight, and will reapprove in a few weeks, is the amount of the levy. Imagine that a big pot of money in a money sack. And that pot of money is represented by these gray bars. And you can see the gray bar in 2017 was fairly low, and then we increased that. In fact, we increased it by 6.44%. And there were a lot of issues that were going on. We did not have those online sales tax, so our sales revenue, sales tax revenue was not robust. We had Mitsubishi leaving. We were losing the Metro Zone. There was a lot of very difficult things going on then. But we increased it then, but since then, those gray bars have stayed very steady, despite the fact that we had to weather some very tough headwinds insofar as changing mortality rates. Turns out, folks are living longer, so their pensions need to last a little longer. So we need to put more money in the pension. But we did that, and yes, at the cost to the general fund. Yes, we did pull back 1.6 million dollars out of the general fund so that we could keep the property tax levy and keep our, our obligation to our pension. But we figured out a way to make that work. And so what I'm saying here, and I drew it in on the very end, 2023 is going to go, that bar, that gray bar is going to go up. In fact, it's going to go up 6.8% based on what's being suggested tonight. I don't want to return to that policy. I don't want to return to this. I think there is an option to minimize our levy ask while still maximizing our services and our, and our, meeting of our obligation. And that compromise, that's what's been used today, that compromise would be, well, one, one idea would be to pull back the $500,000 altogether. That would make that increase, rather than 6.8%, about 3%. Alternately, we could find some, some dollar amount in the middle, maybe 250. That would make the increase of that gray bar just under 5%. Inflation, new numbers are coming out in a few weeks, been hovering right around 4%. Truth in taxation throws a figure out there of 5% and says to government bodies, you need to try to hold within 5%. Otherwise, you have to have a big public meeting to say why you're going over that 5%. I think we need to live within those constraints, find a way to minimize our, our property tax ask, the levy, the gray bar, while maximizing our obligation and what we're doing for the town. And on that note, I am not supportive of the $500,000 policy change.
My Ross Perot impersonation is for the. Thank you. I totally understand that position. This is, this is certainly staff's recommendation, and I'm maybe doing a less than stellar job of, of explaining it, but I do want to jump in a little bit. First thing I notice is on the screen, it says 2022 Property Tax Levy Ordinance. That is not true. It is the 2023 Property Tax Levy Ordinance payable in 2024. That's what we're talking about tonight, so I apologize for the confusion. The other thing that I think is important to note is when we're talking about the levy, it's a, it's a, it's a mathematical formula, as you referenced. So it is the equalized assessed value of the property times the rate equals the levy. The levy is the only dollar amount we're controlling. So when the value of the property goes up, the rate goes down, and we still get the same amount of money. So what we're asking council to do is authorize a levy of the millions of dollars that we're trying to collect for the, to fund our obligations, as I highlighted earlier. I did want to note, the only thing that when, when we went to council, not that this was a, would be a game changer, but when we did go to council in the spring and, and recommend that council consider eliminating, and ultimately agreed to eliminate the vehicle use tax, you know, through this year, we've seen the, the cost increases on all of our fleet, on the cost increases on our general cost of doing business and the like, and we thought this particular property tax levy process presents us an opportunity to build back some of that revenue into the general fund that we can use to support our operations, while at the same time, having hopefully a net zero and, and even if our EAV is correct, a, a reduction in the property taxes paid by the average home. So, so that's really what's driving staff recommendations, but we certainly understand council's position.
Ms. Smith.
I appreciate you providing that clarification. And as a follow-up, is '23 collecting in '24, is that not also adding some new properties to the tax rolls for the first time? Who are we picking up?
We, our, our anticipated equalized assessed value townwide of all taxable properties in Normal is going up close to 18, 19%. That is primarily driven by new commercial and industrial properties being on the tax rolls.
And while the dollar amount of the tax levy is projected to be a 6.8% increase, the actual tax rates are shown to fall under this forecast, so that instead of having, as was the case for 2022, city rates of .95845 times equalized assessed value, we're looking at .86339 times equalized assessed value. So this is an instance where you're saying that the homeowners may see the value of their home increase in value, but Normal will not be holding flat, the percentage applied against that higher rate, correct?
I, I believe that's correct, if I followed your statement. The, but I do want to point out, you were looking at just the town rate. Ultimately, the overall rate is town plus Normal Public Library. That would be about a 14% reduction in the rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Carr.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just a question. When we were talking about these in two-on-ones, there was kind of some helpful data and numbers that staff had run, and it's been, I think, talked to tonight that, you know, yes, there is a, a 6% increase, but dollar for dollar, homeowners are going to see some relief. Ms. Reese, could you maybe speak a little bit to kind of how those numbers were run? And I, I know there was kind of some calculations of what the average property, or average homeowner might look like in terms of tax impact next year. Could you just speak a little bit to that?
I could, but I'm going to ask Mr. Hune to come forward, who probably has those numbers right there in his hand.
Thanks.
Sure. As part of the analysis that we do each year, we look at what the, the average impact might be to a resident or a household. We typically select a home that's valued at $165,000. We did, we, we do know that the home values are increasing, as well as commercial and industrial. So under this current scenario, this for the council, it sounds awkward, but with the levy increase, it likely will pay equal or less than it paid last year, because the assessed value has grown so significantly beyond the 6.8% levy increase. So we're essentially are asking for a bit more in total levy, or we're spreading it over a larger tax base, a more valuable tax base. So individually, at those, at those housing levels, we suspect it'd be about a four or five dollar decrease in, in overall tax for the, for the party.
Thanks. Yeah, that answers my question. And yeah, and so looking towards this vote and preparing this, this levy, you know, when we are able to simultaneously do several things at the same time, funding first responder pensions, you know, supporting our library, all able to, while we were able to dollar for dollar provide some relief to, to homeowners in Normal, I, I think that's a win-win. So yeah, we'll, we'll support this tonight.
Further? Ms. Lorenz.
Well, in light of my comment earlier, I think it would be appropriate at this point to see if, if I made an amendment to the policy. And I would like to, if, if I can do that.
Would you state your amendment?
Yes, I'm just making sure that it's okay to proceed.
Sure.
Okay. The amendment would be to prepare the levy at an amount that would not exceed 5%. And that might bring that down to 250,000 into general fund or less. So I'll just leave it as a less than 5% and we can quibble about the actual dollars at another time, maybe in two weeks.
Kevin, amendment? We have a second.
Pam, if Ms. Reese has something on that.
I'm just looking at legal counsel to make sure we can have the levy with no dollar amount, this, this is rather than a percentage.
Okay, then I can go with, I can go with the dollar amount, if you'd rather.
Can we?
I, I think we need a dollar amount.
Okay. I would propose that we go for, I'm just going to split the difference. I believe it's, oh, don't have it. What would be 250, 14, 288, 612 minus?
Minus 500,000?
No, minus 250.
Minus 250?
Yeah, 14, 788, 612 minus 250. 14,538. No, 14 million!
No, I think that's not quite right.
That's not quite right?
But so it'd be the overall proposed levy.
Public math is the worst.
Exactly. 14,288,612 minus 500,000, minus 250,000.
Correct. Correct. I'll just leave it that way and that's sufficient, Mr. Day?
Yes.
Okay. So minus 250,000. We adjust the levy to that amount. That is my motion.
All set. We have a motion in a second. This restarts the conversation again. I'm hoping we're not going to go down the path of repeating what we just got done tonight. So is there discussion on the, on the amendment? Please call a roll.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
No. The amendment fails. We're back to the original motion. Is there further discussion on that? Again, we're just, this is a motion to prepare the levy. It's not to vote on it. Please call a roll.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
No.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That motion is approved. That concludes our general orders tonight. We have two items of new business, and that is an ordinance, first item, an ordinance adding Division 19 to Chapter 25 of the Municipal Code Regarding Residential Tenant Notification.
Move over, move over.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just give me a moment here. First of all, I want to thank everyone who came up and spoke this evening. They take a lot of courage to come before us. This issue is a little personal for me. I debated over what I actually could say, want to say, need to say, have to say, must say. And I debated, do I share my story? Do I share another story? Do I put facts out there? Do I put data out there? How do I address this? Because this pricked my soul. It pricked my soul because when I first heard of this issue, it was brought to my attention that the ask was for 24 hours. And I took myself back to being raised where we lived in a rental property. And I just became a homeowner for the very first time a few years ago. The comment was made, it's by choice, but if you didn't grow up with much of anything, that's not a choice. That's just where you have a choice to stay. Thought about my upbringing, and I thought about the fact that growing up, and growing up literally for real in poverty, I'm not saying this to get any cries or applause or anything, it's just my reality, you don't understand you have a right, because they make you feel like you ought to be glad you've got somewhere to live. So we never realized the rights we have. And in most cases, and in most of my cases in life, we couldn't, we didn't even have credit to even rent from leasing property. So who did we rent from? The man at the church who had a rental property, and not necessarily did he have a full quote-unquote leasing agreement with us, because that's the best we could do in order to survive. That was also my experience as an adult, and I want to comment, because WGLT wrote an article, and they wrote it as if it happened to me in college. No, I was a 24-year-old grown woman, living by myself, when someone entered my domain. But I didn't understand then that I had a right, and that I was worthy of a right. Why do I say this? Because it pains me that we are even having a discussion or a debate over a right of 24 hours, and we have to quote-unquote compromise down to 12 hours. Where are we as a society to make that a compromise? I feel like it should have been a no-brainer. It's not like we're asking you to get to, to have a week's worth of notice. We're not asking for a month's notice. It's just a basic 24 hours. It pains me that we're here. It pains me that we are having to quote-unquote compromise it down and dumb it down to 12 hours. I think it is disingenuous and somewhat demeaning and borderline dismissive to come at it from that perspective. I take certain situations like this in very person, and that's where I come from on this issue from my heart. Do I think that definitely something should be done? But it never should have had to switch a conversation from 12 to 24 hours. But it never should have had to switch a conversation from 12 to 24 hours. And I hope that at some point, the conversation can shift, will shift. This is not, I think sometimes, and I'll just be very blunt and honest, I think it was the fact of students rising up, a generation who sometimes we agree with and sometimes we don't. But some of you have some courage that none of us would have ever had, the courage to make the decision that you want better for yourself, for understanding that you do have a right and going after that. And in saying that, it puts us in this position to be on notice on something that should have already been in place from the beginning. Would we be having this conversation if a 65-year-old woman came in here who was a renter? By the way, we have a large population that continues to grow in 65-plus renters. We've increased to 8%. Can we talk about the fact that hands down, people of color are the greatest number of renters, though they're the least amount of people in this community? If any of those people, and I just talked about intersectionality, let's put it all together, they were women of color and 70 years old, sitting in front of us asking, would we have debated whether it was 24 hours or 12 hours? Or are we being dismissive to a younger generation by appeasing them and compromising with them, giving them 12 hours? It's not a student ordinance. This is a ordinance that goes across the board in this community to every renter. Thank God I'm a homeowner now, but anything can happen. I've lost a job before and lost everything. It could happen to me again where I have to start all over from the beginning and become a renter. And then definitely in this market, I would have to because I could never be a homeowner again. That's just how bad it is. And then do I have to subject myself to maybe this leasing officer? Or maybe if I have an individual, maybe they might show me some courtesy? Never guaranteed, but I think I would be doing a disservice if I didn't do my part to make sure that every person felt safe in whatever home or dwelling they stay in. And that's what I plan to do tonight.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to emphasize the process because there have been some things that were presented, but I want to provide background for those of you not working closely on this notice requirement. The town staff has met multiple times with not just representatives of the students and their organizations, but also with the major leasing companies. And so it's not anything that has not been studied thoroughly. And the 12-hour notice is a compromise from a 24-hour notice that the students first proposed. And in the ordinance, sending the notice is satisfied without requiring an affirmative reply from even one of the tenants in an apartment. So silence assumes assent or consent to the landlord and a leasing agent coming into the apartment. So I don't see that it is onerous to put something in place, especially with this day in technology where you can send out blast notices on text messages and reach your desired party. As Ms. Harris has pointed out, this ordinance is drafted and refers to tenants because even in talking with some from the realty world, they were surprised to find out that students weren't getting advanced notice because it is common practice for non-student housing to get that advanced notice before someone comes into their dwelling. So I just, I just wanted to say that I believe this request is more than reasonable. I believe that efforts have been made to solicit the input of all the affected parties that we have worked to craft this compromise. And I also want it because I, besides speaking to the students, I've had one of the landlords and some representatives from the Mid Illinois Realtors Association connect with me. And their only concern, they outlined in an email, and it's my understanding that staff responded to them. So we have done our best to contact parties involved in this decision and clarify any uncertainties they had. And I'm all in favor of this.
Further discussion on this? Ms. Lorenz? Did you have something?
I was just going to clarify one statement that Ms. Smith just made. Town staff has spoken, as you indicated, to the various stakeholders. I did have conversations with representative of the Mid Illinois Realtors Association. They had suggested or actually expressed some concern with the language and wondered if there was some ways to clarify. I did respond with staff's opinion, so I'm not sure that we actually agree, but I did try to explain staff's opinion.
Ms. Warren?
Yeah, a couple of things were stated, have been stated that I want to clarify. One is that staff has met multiple times with leasing companies. I know that there was one meeting with Sammy Persight and Young America. Were any of the others contacted and attempted to be met with?
Our, most of our meetings and conversations have been with the three largest student-related property managers.
So Plasact or any of the others?
Not directly.
Redbird?
Mr. Tremmel, have you had any conversations with any of those individuals or businesses?
Not specifically beyond the three that have been talked about tonight. But I will say, kind of qualify that by saying, we, I say, we, the town and the ISU, maintain a neighborhood action team that meets monthly. And generally, we keep a pretty tight pulse on our property management community and try and keep those things in front of them. We generally meet for like a luncheon, you know, twice a year, usually in the spring and in the fall. And we try and keep relevant topics in front of them. I guess a good example in recent history is like the recycling ordinance, when that was being, you know, bantered about. They were well aware of it, well in advance of it actually, you know, becoming, coming to council, so.
And has this come up in those monthly meetings?
The notion of a...
Tenant notification?
Yes.
And the feedback?
But again, that's, well, certainly I think that the feedback would be similar across most of the property management community. They're all going to express probably the same concerns regarding their ability to, you know, to show units, conditions in the market. But so I don't know if I'm answering your question or not.
Did they have a chance to review the ordinance being looked at tonight?
No.
And you bring up the, the multi-apartment recycling. It's funny you bring that up because I've been, I've been thinking about that ordinance too. And that ordinance, how's that working for us? Without me going off topic, and the reason why I'm...
That actually is going off topic.
Well, okay, let me just say, okay, let me just say why I think that it's relevant. Because there was an example of back in, what was that, maybe 2018, 2019? Where we didn't get a lot of buy-in on that from the various stakeholders. And to my knowledge, at least one of the big three is in fact passing the cost along to many of you who may be renting from them as students because it was an ordinance that was put in place that really hasn't worked out well, from what I understand. There's a lot of contamination and so the, there's costs that gets involved or increased because of that. And it's just not working very well, from what I understand. And so I want to bring up the point that I feel like this, my perception of this process by which we are looking at tonight's ordinance has taken maybe a similar path to that recycling ordinance in the sense that we really haven't had robust input. We haven't had robust feedback to the ordinance. I was actually the person that brought it to Mira's attention. They didn't know anything about it. You know, the staff has researched Evanston and Urbana. And I think some of our leaders from the student population brought those to staff. One of the major apartment, property management companies brought DeKalb to the staff's attention. That is not true? All right, I'll take that back. But the, there are 12 communities that have colleges or universities in the state of Illinois that do not have any such code. Charleston, McComb, Carbondale, Mattoon, Champaign, where most of the apartments are by side note, Peoria, Rockford, Bloomington, Naperville, Wheaton, River Forest, and Lyle. Now, I'm not saying they're wrong or right, but there have been statements that we would be an outlier to not have this. When I see 12 versus three, I don't know if that really makes us an outlier. Now, having said all of that, I do think an ordinance is needed. And the DeKalb one is probably the closest sample, example that we've had that I think is warranted. But unfortunately, this ordinance tonight doesn't come close enough to DeKalbs. One other thing that DeKalb does have is a tenant handbook. As I listened to the students and their testimony tonight, not that a handbook is going to change everything, but it does spell out what expectations are. And it also spells out what the accountability is. I'm not sure what the accountability of this ordinance is tonight. The town's not going to have anything to do with adjudicating any sort of violations. You're going to have to hire a lawyer and go to the state's attorney. I just feel that this, you're, let me, may I finish or do you want to?
Oh, sure.
Jump in? I believe, and this is my first set of comments, that tonight's ordinance is not enough. It's not enough. And I don't know what the time is, 12, 24, 6, 8? I believe there is some notice that is required. Be nice to put it in a handbook. I mean, I've experienced this as a parent, okay? I've actually experienced it as a homeowner. I did sell my house twice. And realtors do show up unannounced. And you know what? I let them in. Not that it happened all the time, but I wanted to sell my house. The dryer person shows up somewhere in a four-hour window between 8:00 and noon. There's definition. It happens. My point is, some notification I think we all agree on is good. Tonight's ordinance is lacking, however. And it's lacking, I believe, because we did not take a traditional arc in the creation of this ordinance. Ordinarily, staff would have researched several cities, maybe even some out of state. They would have maybe even researched the cities that don't have an ordinance and said, why? Then this would have been socialized in what we call our regular, about once every four to six weeks, council manager updates. We just had one about a week or so ago. This wasn't even on the agenda. I learned more about the ordinance and the arc of it from many of you sitting in the chamber here tonight. Many of the students would come up to me and say, it's coming to a vote next Monday. And that was like in October. I'm like, really? Okay. So I've been baffled by the process. And I think as a result of the process being not as disciplined as we normally do, we are really falling short of a quality piece of code. And we'll be doing these students a disservice by putting a half-baked ordinance out there with loopholes that I think could be taken advantage of and with definitions that even our realtor friends say are not clear. So I am very concerned about the state of this, of this ordinance. I'm very concerned by the fact that we don't even really have consensus tonight. We get everything from 24 to 12, maybe nothing at all. I have never seen us come to the table on a piece of code so haphazard. And that really concerns me. And that's not doing these people justice or any of the people that are not here but fall into the category of renters. So clean me up on where perhaps I misspoke. Thank you.
Just going to make one comment as a statement of fact. But I think we're all aware that the students have been asked, students and student government has been asking for this for three years. And town staff has worked on this ordinance for 10 months. So I'm not going to weigh in for the quality of it or anything, but put that on the record that the staff has been working on this with us for 10 months. Mr. Byers? I'm sorry.
Well, if Mayor and Mr. Byers don't mind. I apologize if you feel the ordinance is haphazard and perhaps put together and not been clear with council. I'll, I think I'll take just a few minutes to explain the process and how we got to this point. Back in the 2022, 23 school year, I was contacted by representatives of the Student Government Association indicating that they had this concern. We started conversations at the staff level about the issue and conversations with the Student Government Association. We then had conversations with generally what we refer to as the three largest property management companies that serve, that are the biggest servers to the student population. What we learned is this is really a demand-driven issue. This is, this tends to be issue, an issue that addresses the student market more than the non-student market. So that's why most of our conversations have been with the largest student property management company. In the spring semester, in our conversations, we, the staff then chose to invite the three major property management companies, which is Persight, Sammy, and Young America, to a conversation and also invited student government leaders. It was a, it was a good, respectful conversation and I think we all learned a lot. And at that point, staff had already been in contact with the three communities we were aware of that had already adopted an ordinance. Representatives from the legal department, the building inspections department have contacted early on their colleagues in DeKalb, Evanston, and Urbana to find out, to actually get a copy of their ordinance and then to learn from the staff in those communities how those ordinances are functioning. And at the same time, concurrently, in spring of 20, the spring semester of the 2022, 23 school year, this issue was raised at the state level. And it was our opinion at the time, and I believe communicated with council, that if the state takes action, let's, let's wait to see what that action is going to be. We learned in May of 2023 that the issue had been assigned to a committee at the General Assembly and it did not come out of committee. So when the General Assembly adjourned in May, the issue in effect died at the time. Also in May is the end of the school year. We're not going to bring an ordinance like this to council for consideration in the summer when the students are not present. So nothing happened until the fall. Fall 2023, the students return. Student Government Association again raises this issue, brings it to my attention, brings it to council attention, I believe, at your September meet and greet. And I think you all had some open conversations about your thoughts on this particular matter. In the meantime, we had drafted some language back in January, February, March-ish. We pulled that out and that is the language that we shared with the big three, Young America, Sammy, and Persight for review and consideration. At that point... At that point, I had, I believe I emailed all of those individuals, representatives of those, of those property managers, and, and I know Mayor Kus was involved in conversations, and so I kind of stepped back because those individuals and their representatives started having conversations with elected officials. And so I was, I've been waiting for direction, and we received feedback from the legal representatives and from those property management firms on their concerns with that draft ordinance. We then modified the draft and came up with a second draft, the one that's before you this evening. Both of those drafts have also been shared with Mid-Sloane Realtors Association, and I've had conversations with them on both drafts. And so that really brings us to today. I believe some communication has occurred between me and council in the spring, probably with council manager update, and since that time, I think it's primarily been by email. But I guess I'm going to defer to Mayor, Mayor Kus, who's really been the lead in conversations with students and some of the property managers in providing direction, since there has been a variety of opinions on this, on this ordinance.
Mr. Byers?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I have a, have a couple thoughts I'll share and one quick question for staff. So yeah, one, I think that, you know, I'll start in kind of the spirit of several of the comments I've made tonight is, you know, when we have issues that, that affect different private parties that are, are doing business together, whether that's a development or tenants and their property owner, I think the question is, what's our role as a town and, and what is appropriate action for us to take? And I think it's certainly appropriate for us to want to protect the instances we've heard of from happening, which is, hey, I got 15 minutes notice, I got 30 minutes notice. I, I think it's reasonable to want to present those instances from occurring. You know, also think it's reasonable to want to preserve some reasonable customer service experiences from those that I think, again, there are, in my opinion, good faith reasons why someone who is coming through town, you know, maybe they're a student athlete, different issues where I think it is reasonable for someone to get a tour the same day of that they show into a leasing office. And so I've generally, I think in my conversations with colleagues, and I think some of the, the student leaders in this crowd, as well as the property managers, I've kind of, the stance I've kind of had is, I would prefer to see a four or eight-hour ordinance. But overall, do appreciate that this ordinance before us tonight does represent a compromise, and not just in terms of the, the 24 to 12 hours, but some of the scope and the nature of the ordinance. So do appreciate that. And then kind of just the, the quick question I had, and I think several of my colleagues have, have mentioned some of the, the communications with, with MIRA, and I had a specific question for staff, potentially for legal, that I think that one of the, the concerns that we had gotten, I mean, an email was very specific to the definition of emergencies and concerns that if, including legal warrants in the list of emergencies could potentially create some, some vagueness or gray areas. I just wanted to ask legal if they had a chance to, to review that or had any thoughts.
Yes, they reviewed it, and I'm sure Mr. Day has thoughts to share. And, and Mr. Day, while you're also referring or responding to Mr. Byers' question, if you could also at the end, and we'll remind you if you forget, but respond to Ms. Lorenz's thought that the ordinance requires a student to hire an attorney, or, or a tenant, I should say, to hire an attorney and go to the state's attorney's office. Right, just clarify the process.
Sure. With respect to the warrants, and that was kind of a last-minute objection that came out of MIRA, we're not quite sure what their objection was. Right now, warrants, courts don't issue warrants to landlords to enter property. Those go to police officers to enter property. Police officers don't have landlords enter property with respect to warrants. We check with our police department, and turns out you don't send the landlord first through the door on a search warrant case. In fact, they're not. That would probably defeat a lot of the purpose of the search warrant. So we're, there shouldn't be any issues where there's a warrant issue with a landlord entering the property. They're not part of that process. Maybe giving the police a key so that the police can enter without breaking the door down occasionally happens, but that would not be implicated in, under this ordinance because they're not entering the property there. So I don't think warrants are an issue that would arise under this. And in any case, I think a warrant, any court order would override the provisions of this. With respect to the private right of action, this would be just a lawsuit between the tenant and the landlord. It could be, they could give an attorney, they could go pro se, file something in the court. It's not through the state's attorney's office. It would just be a private civil action, so the state's attorney would not be involved.
But they would have to hire a lawyer?
Or they could proceed pro se, yes. Yeah, you don't have to have a lawyer, you can represent yourself in court.
Just last point, and I think just maybe the last question for legal. So I think, I understand the, the position and the thought, the thoughts there. I guess the question is, would there be any reason it would not make sense, just for complete clarity, to add, for example, or in the case of a warrant, to the end of the long sentence in Section E that lists the emergencies? Would there be any reason we wouldn't do that, or that would harm the ordinance? Because for me, there, there's no harm in adding some extra clarity.
Issue that we've come across, and kind of the big picture here is, right now, it's broad as to what the defenses may be in a landlord case. You know, it has to be reasonable what constitutes an emergency. Once we start adding the specifics and excluding certain things, what we are doing is we're creating exemptions. Now it's a, preserve the property, or a warrant is an emergency, but why if you get something that's kind of like a warrant but isn't a warrant? So we're trying not to delve into the specifics because that's just going to create a much larger, much more comprehensive regulatory scheme than I think is what the intent was. At least staff was given the intent of drafting this ordinance. If we tried to puzzle through every what-if that somebody could think of, you'd have a 200-page bill in front of you. That certainly everybody would hate, particularly the landlords, because it would be much more regulatory than this current ordinance.
Yeah, thanks, and appreciate that, yes, if we, if we were to list out every, every form of emergency, that, that list would probably get quite long. And really, the only reason I was asking about this one specifically is because we had MIRA bring it up, who represents, you know, a large amount of realtors and folks like that. So that was the reason I had brought it up. And so, yeah, I understand that adding, adding, they're concerned with adding extra specificity. So I understand that.
And I'd add that 200 pages, you'd still have some what-ifs not answered. Ms. Smith? No. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks to everybody who showed up tonight. It, believe it or not, is somewhat rare that this many people take an interest in the town of Normal and what your council is doing. So I'm glad to see a full room. And for those who spoke, it, I think there's probably, I'm confident that there's a similar tone and a similar experience that has been shared by many, maybe everybody in this room, maybe not, but of getting, living in an apartment and getting little or no notice before somebody shows up. And to those who expressed their personal stories with that, and especially to the females who did so tonight, who are in a position where they did not feel safe in their own home in our community, that is a problem. And I would hope that everybody up here agrees with that, and, I mean, I certainly do, and I want you all to know that those concerns of the surprise, little to no notice, somebody is in your place, multiple people are in your apartment, those days hopefully will be behind us, they should be. I think those are completely justified, and I want you guys to know that you are absolutely heard of. And so as I think through, in the context of this issue, that as a starting point, I then think about, okay, so how do we address that concern without, with also keeping in mind prospective tenants and not creating unintended consequences that will negatively impact people who are wanting to rent and looking to rent places? And how do we balance both of those, recognizing we need to take care of the tenants, make sure they feel safe, make sure that they are respected in their home in the town of Normal, and solve that problem without creating new ones unintentionally? And so, you know, an example is transfer days at ISU, where people will come randomly down, that come down to campus for a single day before going back and are not here based on viewing hours of 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., which is an 11-hour span in a day. Those people who would do that for transfer days, who are transferring to ISU, will be new to the community, they will not have an opportunity to walk into one of the big three management companies or anybody else that day and see any place. You know, and that, I mean, there are ways around that. You can make appointments in advance, of course, but if you're new to the community and you're new to ISU, that is an unintended consequence of having a timeframe that is longer than the showing hours where there is zero same day at all. I also think that we, we have a big need for more affordable and equitable housing in this community and in the town of Normal. That is a severe need that I don't think anybody, I would hope, would try to disagree with. But because those units are so few and far between, I would also hate to create a situation unintentionally where you have people on tight schedules, not a lot of flexibility, who are, as a result, put in a situation where they're having a hard time being able to see a place before they rent it because of things moving so quick in this current market because we don't have enough. Finding that balance, the fact that the showing notice is longer than the viewing hours in a same-day situation is the point that I cannot seem to get away from. And I want to, you know, again, echo very legitimate concerns. We heard students at the beginning of this. How do we solve that problem while keeping in mind their unintended consequences that can affect prospective tenants as well? And I think it's our job up here to balance all the constituents present in Normal, current and tenants, and of course, in this case, does do it.
In a prior life, I was involved in sales, and unfortunately, the saying is, "What have you done for me lately?" And I hear the frustration of students who are already paying their rent, suddenly finding themselves in a position where they're in, wondering, "Do I have to say, 'Yes, you can come in,' or is there some adverse impact to refusing to allow the leasing agent to show something through, somebody through their unit?" And so it's, this is, to me, is a question of a balance of power. The individual I spoke with admitted that at current, they probably have a 99% occupancy rate. And if this ordinance is enacted, all of the landlords and property managers will be playing on a level playing field. So it's not as if, if they cannot show somebody a property because it's under the 12-hour notice requirement, it's not as if they're going to lose it to the competition. And the individual who mentioned that she had even made notice and appointment with the property company two weeks prior, but witnessed herself seeing someone texting on the drive over, which is illegal, by the way, but, but also calling at the door when they're in there. So the, the minority of individuals that would be affected would be those who have not planned ahead, but I, I seriously doubt whether ISU does not prepare enough of an orientation packet for their transfer students to make them aware of, of the current housing situation in our community. So again, I think it behooves companies to take, respect the clients they are serving now and not prioritize the, a prospect over somebody who's paying them rent now.
I, I just want to make a quick comment on that, too, Mr. McCarthy coming in. I think, let's be clear here, this ordinance does not preclude somebody from calling a student on an hour notice and the student saying, "Yes, you can come to my apartment." That's okay. That option is there. This does not forbid a landlord talking to a tenant and making an arrangement outside of this ordinance. In fact, it's stated in the ordinance that that is something that they can do. The idea that someone shows up one day and has one day to make a decision on an apartment, I find to be very extreme, given the total population of people renting in the community.
Mr. McCarthy?
I guess I'll start there, Mayor. Thank you for bringing that up because that hadn't been yet mentioned, that one of the many parts of the ordinance that I, that I agree with and find important is the ability of the landlord and the tenant to decide. We're not precluding that. In fact, we hope that's actually what happens. Hope that landlords start talking to you guys, and you guys are talking to the landlords, and we stay the heck out of it, frankly. So I just wanted to make sure that we're underlying that that right is still there. We're not removing that from anybody, and that's, in fact, what we hope. You know, some of the comments about power and balance, I think is an appropriate conversation. I think the reality of why we find ourselves here tonight is that there is an imbalance of power, and there isn't basic protections of privacy rights. And parties couldn't agree on how to solve that problem, not picking sides about who had a better argument or right or wrong or business models or any of that. But that's just the obvious of why we're here. There is a little, little balance right now in how this market has evolved. But I think the conversation, parts of this conversation, we're losing the forest for trees a little bit. From what I understand, the, the non-student adult rental market benchmark is pretty much 24 hours, in some cases 12 hours. So this at 12 hours is in no way off the mark. We are benchmark to the rents of the community. I don't understand why that is confusing to anybody. I do not understand that. Also, it seems that we're trying to sacrifice the good in pursuit of perfection by foregoing a decision tonight and trying to table this for some perfect ordinance. We're here because of the stories that we're hearing, that basic privacy rights are not in place and people are getting entered into their homes and have been for a while. Get something good done tonight, I implore my colleagues. Get something good done tonight. If there's something awful that's coming out of this, we have the opportunity to come back and do something about it. For me, this is not hard. This is an easy decision. It's basic privacy rights that we as adults, if we were renting, would expect for ourselves. If I were to put my 93-year-old mom in an apartment in this community, I would expect that she gets some privacy notice of who's coming into her apartment. I'm not discounting anybody's business needs. I'm not discounting or favoring anybody's personal privacy needs. It's basic privacy, if you ask me. I'm not willing to sacrifice current privacy needs tonight in favor of pursuing something more perfect and putting this off. Thank you.
We'll do discussion on this.
Get a second bite at the apple. Usually, I think we all do, so I'll take mine. You know, you, you, you said a word that I don't think has been mentioned yet, Mr. McCarthy, and that is table. I, I don't know that, we talked about tabling. The way that works is you could, you could make a motion to table, and usually that has to come back in two weeks. Otherwise, it goes away indefinitely. It's an interesting thought. Glad you brought it up. I'm reminded of a placard that hung in my father-in-law's house that said, he was an engineer, said, why is there never enough time to do it right the first time, but always enough time to do it again? Why is there never enough time to do it right the first time, but enough time to do it over, redo, oops? I'm afraid that we are going down the oops path. Sounds real technical, but back to my earlier comment about the multifamily recycling, we didn't get that one right. We didn't take enough time to that, on that one, to do it right the first time, and I suspect we'll take the time to do it right again. Another point that, I guess, is bothering me in the back of my mind, we've had seven people speak tonight, we've had about 10, I think, emails to our mayor and council over the last several months since the beginning of the semester. I have yet to see any data, complaints of the number of times this has happened. Now, one could argue one time is too many, okay, I can't totally disagree, but is this a situation of a couple of less-than-stellar employees that perhaps should have a performance improvement plan, in all seriousness, to do their job better? To the person who spoke about how she witnessed, you know, the, literally as a prospective tenant, you know, the notice not being given, who was that leasing agent? And they're not following the policy, at least of one of the key players, because I happen to have their policy. So how widespread is this problem? I'd like to see some data. I've not seen any hard data. I know this has been talked about for three years, that's news to me, the first I heard of it was maybe February or March of earlier this year. Honestly, I didn't know it was even still a thing because, as you said, the end of the semester came and word on the street, folks, was that it was not something that was going to be picked up. One of the major voices had graduated and that's the last I heard. And then, once again, through some of my contacts with the student population, I heard that the resolution got passed by Student Government Association. And I got a copy of the ordinance that's been drafted, I think that got drafted last spring, I got finally a copy of that through one of my student friends and then later from staff. And we didn't see the revision to the ordinance that we're looking at tonight until just a few days ago earlier this week. Where's the process? Where was it in the two-on-one? Perhaps it was part of a two-on-one agenda item in the first or second quarter of 2023, but a lot happened between then, and we've had two very robust council manager updates, or two-on-ones, as we call them, this fall. Why wasn't it on the agenda there? Why wasn't the ordinance shared with us then? Why wasn't the pulse taken of all of us then, the way it normally is? I'll leave where I started, and that is, do we take time? And I'm talking two weeks. But cooler heads prevail, let's work through some of the things that the Illinois Realtors Association has highlighted, let's work through some of the new edits in the ordinance, let's get more of the monthly meeting participants that Mr. Trammell talked about involved, let's make sure we do it right. And we have an example of doing it right the first time, temporary sign ordinance, we get all the people together and we put a pause on that in the middle of the process. Now, it's a process that had to go to the planning commission. We paused that because we realized we hadn't dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. And what we did, we took a minute, gathered our thoughts, got all the people in the room, and did it right the first time. If there's any interest in tabling on this, I'd be happy to extend that motion. If anybody has anything to add on the data collection, I'd be interested in hearing that as well.
Is there a discussion on this side? Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz?
No.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That ordinance is approved?
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to take just a short, short break. If you want to hang around for the rest of this meeting, please do, there's more to learn, but oftentimes when we have a crowd like this, people leave, so, and you may have press people outside that want to talk to you.
What? I didn't even hear what he said. I'm a nut?
I'm 17.
What's the latest, immediate?
I like your votes participating.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're great.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
What's up, dude?
He did a great job.
He did a great job, it's intimidating.
I mean, I do convince people.
Yeah.
It's just like...
Yeah. Hey, it's all good. Even sometimes up here, my heart rate increases a little bit before I have to speak, you know, but it always works out. You're always glad you spoke.
I hear you.
Yeah, cool. Well, congrats to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Of course.
Hey, you guys definitely set up a precedent going forward about the student body, so I think a lot of people that I remember who voted DS and voted...
What's that?
He said he can pick a few marks and remember.
Oh. I don't know.
Yeah.
But, you know, last month, 200...
What'd he say? How did he catch that?
200.
No, it was the, it was the most...
No, it was the first time I ran. But, you know, I get it.
What's up, man? Hey, congrats, man.
I'll see you guys later.
Take it easy, guys.
Grant?
Thank you, my voice.
No, I couldn't, honestly.
I just like focus on the news.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you guys did great. Let's talk to you in front of the mic. Seriously, when I'm up here, when I have to speak, I sometimes shake a little bit, flutter before I say something, even if it's not, I'm not nervous about it. It's just speaking in front of a mic is challenging, so... Yeah, yeah, there's a couple plans of what they're going to do, work on the lease expire. In town? Yeah, I get it, totally. Yeah, I get it, yeah, and it's, you know, my comments, it's hard to, you know, it's what's horrible, right? And then it just gets challenged, so, but, hope it works out, good luck, and good success. I do, I do. And we're heading to a cool summer there, like, I think one of you guys mentioned, we're at the Social Taco, we're at the Tomlin Smoothie, so... Yeah.
Actually went to...
See, we're like, I like to play a little bit better, because I choke a little bit, but, yeah, it'll be good, it'll be good. So, I hope it works out again, there's something we can, you know, you guys are relocating and, you know, something we can do, let us know. Yeah, no, you're good.
Well, we got a whole lot of one-item work, right?
Yeah. Call the question.
How you feeling, Karen? Is it getting, stretching it out?
I sat down, I guess Thursday night, I took an online class and it's been yelling at me ever since.
Are the drugs kicking in or wearing off?
Aw.
Come back. Let's move on to item 11, an ordinance replacing Division 9 of Chapter 8 of the municipal code concerning the regulation of small wireless. Need for approval?
Second.
Thank you. I'll discuss on this.
Yes, Mayor Kuz, if I could just introduce this and then certainly we can respond to any questions council might have. This particular ordinance modifies, it amends our current regulations regarding small cell wireless. I did want to point out that late in the day today, we heard from one utility company who expressed some concerns about this proposed ordinance, and I will share what they weren't comfortable with was the section regarding location guidelines and pre-planning. They weren't keen on the location prioritization, which in our language, we prioritize alleys versus roadways, and co-location versus separate, that sort of thing. And they also expressed concern that our regulations regarding design detail and engineering requirements might be a little cumbersome, but did understand that this was likely going to remain a staff recommendation because the draft ordinance was shared with a variety of utility companies and their contractors. So we will have a follow-up meeting with this company, but I don't anticipate that we would change our recommendation, because these are the recommendations that have been developed through quite a period of study and analysis and with a consultant, and they identify the town's priorities. Our priorities are, in fact, locating small cell wireless installations in alleys if possible versus roadways, co-locating if possible, things like that. I would also suggest that if there's concerns regarding the detail we might want to see about location and the engineering detail, many installations for these kind of wireless facilities are along state routes, Main Street you see them, Veterans Parkway you see them, so we don't believe providing details to the town on their installation and making sure these kind of installations are secure and won't fall over, you know, that's a little elementary, but there's much more to it than that, aren't overly burdensome. So, we, I just wanted to put that out there so councils are aware, but we did share our draft ordinance with other contractors and other utilities. What we suggest here is modifying our current requirements for the wireless installations. We had a period of time a few years ago where they were popping up all over the place. You've seen them, sometimes they're right along the curb, they're barely off the roadway. We've had a lull in installations in the last year or two, and we thought now would be the time to adopt ordinances and adopt our regulations before we see an uprising again in these kind of installations. So I just wanted to give a little background and a little current information about the proposed ordinance. Staff certainly have the experts, Mr. Carraju and Mr. Otto and Ms. Davison are much more detailed and have the expertise on this proposed ordinance, but I did want to share that back.
Well, I will just start off saying I'm very much in favor of this ordinance because it does give us local authority to decide how our community is going to look in the public realm in ensuring safety and proper installation of these. You know, as Ms. Reese indicated, there are multiple companies that are going to do this. So to have a baseline and a guideline for them to operate under instead of the rules that they might have experienced in other communities or personally their preference is an important part of this process. Discussion, please come around.
I guess in light of my earlier comments about, you know, getting stakeholders around a table and so forth, I'm just kind of curious, what, you know, Ms. Reese, you mentioned that collaboration was done in some form, at least notification, how much, could you describe the collaboration with the other utilities and then also what kind of notice they got with these changes as well as opportunity to provide feedback?
Well, in the council report, we identified the three primary installation companies that received the draft ordinance back in July, so... So Ms. Gataraju has been, I guess, available for months to talk about this. In, in preparing this draft ordinance, though, it was done as, as a group effort with McLean County Regional Planning, City of Bloomington, and then Columbia Technology Corporation, CPC Energy. I'm not sure, I may be missing another consulting group, but it, it, it was a consortium that put this draft ordinance together.
And the person that, or entity that brought up issues, was that just today? Okay, but they had this advanced notice like everybody else?
Their contractor had, had noticed.
Okay. Okay, all right. Very good, thanks.
Further on this side? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Before taking a motion for adjournment, there is no follow-up public comment, so before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns?
Three things I, I wanted to highlight. First of all, Veterans Day is officially this Saturday. And the local veterans organizations are hosting a service at the Courthouse Square inside at 11 o'clock on November 11. If you've never participated in one of these, it's a very moving service. And I, I would encourage you to look into that. Secondly, congratulations to the Normal High School bands for being picked to appear in the 2025 London New Year's Day Parade and Festival. That's quite an honor and I, the Normal High Schools includes students from both, uh, both campuses because they recently combined. So it's great that these musicians will get a chance to be honored on a world stage. And finally, leaf collection is officially underway. And if you don't know when the trucks will be in your area, the town does provide an interactive map and you can see it for yourself.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just want to give a little shout out. I'm reading, so you're with me. I noticed, uh, we've got a little bit of an acknowledgement that seems to be pretty rare. That the Assistant Maintenance Supervisor, LaDeen Finley, helped the Facilities Department achieve the Cleaning Industry Management Standard Green Building Advanced Honor Certificate from the Worldwide Cleaning Industry Association. And that because of her work, the town of Normal is one of only two municipalities in the nation in the entire country to achieve this level of professionalism as an in-house service provider. Wow, that's awesome. I just wanted to call that out and say thanks, LaDeen, and the Facilities Department for your work.
As we're in.
Well, in light of a lot of discussions tonight about, you know, housing, it didn't seem pertinent during the discussion, but I wanted to bring it up here at this portion, and that is, I've been listening to and educating myself on the current housing crisis in Bloomington Normal. And some of the statistics are pretty startling that I want to share here. First of all, the multifamily rental vacancy rates in 2018 was 8.2%. It was kind of hovering there, 2010, 8.3, and down to 8.2 in 2018. An industry standard of where you kind of want to be, not anything lower, is about 4% to 5% vacancy. Currently in 2021, which is even dated, 2%. 2% vacancy. I would say that, you know, talking about those who are probably most vulnerable with a statistic like that are, are low-income residents and this data, by the way, was provided to me by the McLean County Regional Planning Commission. As of June of '23, the Lytech Low-Income Housing Tax Credit housing units in the county are projected to decline by 1,000 from 1,300 to 1,200 in the next three to four years. And 96 out of 120 are converting to market rate. So we are facing what I know Realtors and I've heard others in kind of this housing segment call truly the missing middle. Because as these low-income housing tax credits are not reapplied for, speculative, you know, land developers come in, take these low-income properties, throw some paint, do a little remodeling, appliances, and put them out at market rate. And fewer and fewer people who have the fewest options are able to find housing. So, you know, that's, that is an issue that I think needs to be in the forefront of our minds. I just wanted to share it since it was somewhat of a relevant topic tonight. Thank you.
Press done.
I was just going to move approval, Mayor, so you may not be ready for me.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
You moved approval, but you didn't.
Adjourn.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. We are adjourned.